Alrighty, here we go. Good morning, everybody. This is the Committee on Agriculture. My name is Mark Hashem. I'm the Chair. Next to me is the Vice Chair, Representative Perusso. And the members are Representative Loen, Representative Martin, Representative Matayoshi, which is here, and Representative Chris Todd, Tokiokei Matsumoto. And before us, we have, I'm gonna jump right in, before us, we have our first bill up, HB 702 relating to farm-to-school procurement. First person to testify is Bonnie Kaha Kulani of the State Procurement Office in opposition. Is she on?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair of Members of the Committee, Bonnie Conquy for the State Procurement Office. We stand on our written testimony in opposition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Department of Agriculture, I believe it's Morris Atta, and with comments.
Oh, good morning, Chair. Yeah, this is Morris Atta, behalf of Philistine.
Morris, you're muted.
Oh, sorry. Am I still muted now? Can you hear me now?
I hear you, Morris.
Okay. We're at the Agriculture. We would like to stand on our testimony.
Am I supposed to be able to hear?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now, or am I still muted? Am I still muted?
I can hear you.
Oh. Not sure everyone else can.
Here. So we're back in. We'll jump right back to, that's, guys, we're gonna go back to Morris Atta of Department of Agriculture.
Chair, the department stands on its testimony, supporting the incorporation of, you know, local agricultural products into the state institutional system, and defers to the Department of Education regarding the specifics of the measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we're going back to DOE, Randy Tanaka. Are you on?
Yes, hello to Hashem, Vice Chair Perusso, and members of the committee. We stand by our testimony submitted. We believe that this is a very good idea, where we can regionalize and support the local farming communities within the islands. So we are in support of this bill. Oh.
Very good. Thank you very much. Next, we have Eric Abey, Hawaii Primary Care, in support. Jumping next to Ningui Ko, Center for Agreeding, Center for Getting Things Started, in support. She. Okay, next up, we're, Jesus Christ. Sorry, I'm gonna apologize in advance if I butcher your name, so please. Next up, Nicole Kalasse, Hawaii Cadamens Association, in support. Next, we have Jess Sobol-Sinkie, Hawaii Food Corp, Hawaii, in support. Next, we have, you know what, I, we have a whole bunch of testimony and support. I am going to jump to the people that are on Zoom that are scheduled to testify. So we have Ulupono in support. Is Ulupono on?
Yeah, good morning, Chair. Hashem, Vice Chair Perusso, and members of the committee. Michael Munikata here on behalf of the Ulupono Initiative. We stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, next up, we will have Brian Miyamoto in support of Hawaii Farm Bureau. I know Brian's on the line. I see him.
Good morning, Chair Hashem, Vice Chair Perusso, members of the committee. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support. We believe that this proposed geographic preference will provide the flexibility that hopefully is going to increase the participation in our farm-to-school program and ultimately our part of the state program. But we are very supportive of this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have Lauren Zerbo of Hawaii Food Industry Association, in support. She's not on? Okay, next, we have Dexter Kishida, individual, in support. Is he on?
Yes. Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. Can, sorry, can you hear me okay? Great. Just to, I stand in strong support of this bill, but would like to add to my testimony that that what I felt this bill does is give the DOE to the tools and also making it the default option to buy local. So I really appreciate that part of, or that part in the heart of the bill, that while the DOE and the State Procurement Office work together to do a great job in creatively finding ways to buy more local, it's still creative ways and kind of relied upon the great staff there. So this will help to create, create almost a baseline or the default to buy and support our local farms, agriculture, and food producers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So that's all for our virtual testifiers. Do we have anybody else in the waiting room? Seeing none, okay, members, do you have any questions? Seeing no questions, we're moving on. HB 549 relating to regiment standards. Okay, first up, we have DCCA in opposition.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Kat Awakuni-Kaloon on behalf of DCCA. The department respectfully opposes this measure for a number of reasons. You have our written testimony. We believe that these matters are outside the jurisdiction of DCCA. Generally, you know, the Department of Agriculture has the expertise and the equipment, the resources, the buildings that house all of these very technical kinds of compliance work. And also because we see that there will be likely no budgetary or organizational benefit. And then finally, you know, we have a unique circumstance in the way that our department is funded, in that every single program needs to be self-sufficient in that particular way. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Department of Agriculture with comments. Morris?
We want to share, Vice Chair, yes, Morris Atta. The department will stand on its testimonies, providing comments. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. That's all the testimony that we have. Nobody else is in the waiting room. Members, do you have any questions? Seeing none, we're moving on. HB 681 relating to management of state funds. First up, we have Budget and Finance with comments, Craig Hui. Next, he's not on. Okay, next, we have Department of Agriculture with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Again, the department will stand on its written testimony, providing comments. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Next, we have Farm Bureau with, in support.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support.
Okay, next up, we have John Okudara in support. John, are you?
Here.
Okay, good.
For members of the committee, thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of House Bill 681, which attempts to copy a program implemented in Oregon when they were, I mean Iowa, when they were trying to diversify their agricultural industry from grain to other ag. Unlike, what it attempts to do is incentivize financial institutions to make loans to viable agricultural projects. The Hawaii program for farm loans is a lender of last resort, as opposed to the Oregon program, which tries to incentivize the financial institutions to make loans to strong viable agricultural programs. And Iowa was so successful, they expanded the program to other industries and businesses. It doesn't encumber any state funds in terms of long-term. It just, the state provides incentive for an institution to make the loan by saying, you make the loan, we support it by investing in a certificate of deposit for at least a year. The idea is to make that an incentive for the financial institution to qualify and make the loans to those different businesses. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, so that's all the testimony that we have before us. Members, is there nobody else in the waiting room? Is there any members wishing to ask questions? Seeing none. John, I have a question. Do you have a question, Vice Chair? So I have a question. John, does this have a budgetary impact?
I can't see anything. There's money that has to be within the treasury. And from what I can understand on how it's done, the money stays in the treasury, it just changes form. It becomes in the form of a certificate of deposit for at least a year, but it's not given to the financial institution. It's just saying, we're buying that to say that we think you should make this loan, and for at least a year, we'll buy that CD for the limitations that are in the bill.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none, we are moving on. Moving to HB 767, relating to Farm-to-School Program. First up, we have Department of Agriculture with comments. Morris, you still there?
Yes, I am. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Again, the department will stand on its written testimony, offering comments, but I would like to reiterate that, you know, the department strongly supports the farm-to-school program and is, and continues to be a committed partner in making it a success. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have DOE in support, Randy Tanaka. Are you there?
Yes, once again, good morning, Chair Hashem and Vice Chair Perusso. We are in support of this. We think it creates some synergy at different levels between the Department of Ag and the Farm-to-School Program. So we're clearly in support of that and cross-utilizing assets that the Department of Ag has that could support farm-to-school. We're also consistent with goals and plans and an annual report that gives us guidance against our targets and goals that we should have at the beginning of every year to measure our success and/or corrections that we have to make to improve that threshold of 30%. So we are in strong support of this bill. Thank you very much. Hello.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Hawaii Primary Care Association in support, Eric Abey. Nope. Next, we have Center for Getting Things Started in support. It's Ningui Ko. Nope. Next, we have Hawaii Food Corps in support. No, and we have many other individuals in support. I will just read off the people that are scheduled to testify, which is Ulupono, Mica, in support.
Morning, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this measure. We stand on our testimony in strong support. We just offer some language edits to the goal within the bill, but we truly believe that this bill better aligns a lot of the resources that are out there to affect change in the farm-to-school program. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have Farm Bureau in support. Brian, I see you on there. Are you still there?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support. And as you're a DOE, you want to ensure that there is collaboration between DOE and DOE. And we do apologize, Chair, there is a typo in our testimony referencing Department of Agriculture when it should say, we do support moving the farm-to-school program to Department of Education. And again, farm-to-school is more than just procuring the food into, for school use, there's also educational component. So we do support this initiative. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Individual by the name of Brookfield in support. Are they on? Nope. So we have.
Hello?
Oh, you're there. Okay.
Yes, good morning. I'm in support of this bill. I just wanted to add a comment maybe for clarification. Last year, there was a similar bill, and I was told that the Department of Education was already serving 30% local and on track to hit 40% by 2024. So I think the number should increase. I could throw out a random number, but I leave it to them to set a number that's a goal instead of something that they're already doing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we have Dexter Kishida, individual in support.
Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. I love the alignment of policy and where funding and the resources are, as well as, thank you to the Department of Ag who housed the program as well as the position initially, but with the willingness of AS Tanaka and the DOE, it's time for it to sit where, sit back home or where it should, I guess. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all the people that we have scheduled to testify. Is there anybody else in the waiting room? Nope, seeing none. Members, are there any questions? No, very, very good. Moving on, we're moving to HB 461 relating to coffee labeling. Okay. Give me a minute to get ready here. First up, we have Department of Agriculture with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Again, the department will stand on its written testimony, supporting the intent of this measure and offers comments. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Hawaii Food Industry Association in opposition. Lauren, are you on? Oh, she's not on. Okay, next, we have Kona Perfect in support. Then we have numerous individuals. I'm gonna skip over to Hawaii Coffee Company in opposition.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is John Garbaldi on behalf of Hawaii Coffee Company. We stand in opposition to this measure. You have our written testimony, but I just wanted to highlight a few points. Hawaii Coffee Company offers a range of coffee from a 10% Kona blend to a 100% Kona coffee. Our labels reflect whether it's a blend or 100%, so customers are informed and have a choice. We believe an economic impact study should be done before passing any legislation. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have Rancho Aloha. Did I pronounce that right? In support, Bruce Corker. Are they on?
Good morning.
Good morning. Go ahead. Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you, Chair Hashem, Vice Chair Perusso, and members of the committee. My name is Bruce Corker. I am a coffee farmer in the North Kona District of Hawaii County, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Kona Coffee Farmers Association. I strongly support HB 461. I would like to make two points in support of the bill. First, to emphasize the point made in the very first sentence of the bill. For 30 years, Hawaii has been the only state in the United States and the only region anywhere in the world to permit the use of its origin names on packages containing only 10% genuine produce. to permit the use of its origin names on packages containing only ten percent genuine produce. I believe it is long past time for Hawaii to join the rest of the country and the rest of the world and protect the economic interests of its specialty crop farmers and to protect visitors to Hawaii from being deceived by misleading labels. Second point, I encourage members of the committee to read the Feldman Study on the economic impact of ten percent Kona blends. There is a link in my written testimony to that study. It indicates that Kona coffee farmers lose one point four million dollars a year or more because of ten percent blends. That means that the average five acre Kona coffee farm loses more than twenty thousand dollars per year because of the blends. Rather than enriching the blenders and sending excess profits to their owners on the mainland, the legislature should enact four sixty-one and protect its farmers and to protect consumers. Please enact this bill. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we have Lions Gate Farm in support, Suzanne Schreiner. Is she on? Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next testifier. That's all we have for testifiers on this bill. Is there anybody else in the waiting room? Seeing none. Members, are there any questions? Seeing none. We're moving on to HB six, eight, five relating to raw milk. Okay, first up, we have Department of Health in opposition. Are they on? Are we frozen?
Hi, so sorry for that late. Yeah, it's kind of slow here. Aloha Chair Hashman, Vice Chair Perusso. Yes, the Department of Health, my name is Peter O'Shore. I'm the Department of Health Program Manager for the Food Safety Branch. The department vigorously opposes this bill. This bill asks or makes some statements that are basically untrue. There are no health benefits recognized by any legitimate medical organization. And the bill also asks the Board of Agriculture to adopt rules that will ensure that raw milk, certified raw milk is safe. And that is not possible because the FDA has proved in the courts that conclusively shows that raw and even certified raw milk are unsafe. And there is no question as to whether raw milk, as to whether it's safe or not to consume. So this is just another falsehood that's been spread over the years and the science absolutely does not agree with the consumption of raw milk. And this would be the worst time to start introducing a potentially outbreak causing vector into our system now. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have Farm Bureau in opposition.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its testimony respectfully opposing this measure.
Okay, thank you very much. There, we have numerous individuals in opposition and, oh, we have a few individuals in support, but that's all the members that we have for, in our waiting room. Members, do you have any questions regarding raw milk? Seeing none. We're moving on. Sure. Right ahead.
I don't know if this is gonna be for Farm Bureau or Department of Health, but I'm wondering, I know your testimony said that raw milk has the potential of making someone ill. Is it, does it have the potential of making someone ill with a transmittable disease to other people who have not drank raw milk? I'm wondering how combustible this thing is.
The Department of Health. Peter? He may have thought that you were done. I, I do recall in previous testimonies he had brought up that there is a possibility of transmission. And so, you know, our opposition is for a commercial sales of self-consumption. You know, we don't oppose that, but, but again, I don't want to put words in the Department of Health mouth, so I won't speak on behalf of the Department of Health.
Fair enough. Thanks Brian.
Okay, anybody else has questions? Okay, seeing none. We're moving on to HB four, oh, nine relating to animal caretakers. Okay. First up, we have Office of Hawaiian Affairs in opposition.
Good morning, Chair Hashman, Vice Chair Perusso, members of the committee. This, my name is Wayne Tanaka, testifying for the administration of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. I'll just stand on our written testimony in opposition to this bill. I don't think there's much else more to add in terms of, you know, why we think it's, it's a bad idea to encourage the proliferation of cat, cats in the landscape. I'm happy to answer any questions that folks we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have Department of Transportation in support. I don't think they're on. Next up, we have DLNR in opposition.
Yeah, good morning. David Smith, Administrator with the Division of Forest and Wildlife. Will stand on our written testimony and both myself and Josh Atwood are available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Department of Health in opposition.
Good morning. This is Grace Simmons from Department of Health. We stand on our written testimony in opposition of the bill and we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Hawaii County Council in opposition. Next, we have Hawaii Humane Society with comments.
No.
No, they're not on. So we have numerous individuals, like several pages of this. So I'm not gonna go through everybody. I will just go through the people that we have in the waiting list. We have Dana Weber, individual in opposition.
Oh, my couple. I am in opposition to this bill and I did submit written testimony, but I just want to make the point that Hawaiian wildlife are in danger due to predation by cats and mongooses and the trap neuter release system allows these predators to roam freely, wreak havoc on wildlife. So we need to take immediate and assertive action in order to protect our native species.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have individual Tanaya Brookfield in support.
Good morning. I agree with previous testifiers that, you know, our native species are very important, but I think doing nothing doesn't solve the problem. Since trap neuter release is so controversial about its effectiveness, I'm suggesting that instead of the funds being used for that sort of program, it be used for a sanctuary place so that both the cat lovers and the native species lovers can work together to get the cats, the feral cats, out of these areas instead of just neutering them and returning them. A significant amount of money is spent on the trap neuter release program. However, a lot of the cat lovers will not take the animals to the humane society because of fear that they'll be killed, because they will be if they can't get adopted. So I think a win-win solution where both communities can work together is if there's a sanctuary place that these cats can go so that they aren't preying on native birds and that their feces is not affecting our native seals. So anyways, I'm just suggesting an alternative that I think would work for everybody and solve problems for both. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. I have about two more pages of testimony in opposition and support. Is there anybody else in the waiting room? There is none. So members, do you have any questions? Seeing none. We're gonna recess for decision making. We're here on the Committee of Agriculture deciding on our 10:00 AM agenda. First up, we have House Bill 702. What we're gonna do is take the SBO's recommendation and remove Section 2, page 4, lines 18 to 20. And we're gonna defect the date from, to 7/1/2050 and make technical amendments. Any comments or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair, can you take the vote?
Sure. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Rep Lawrence.
Aye.
Rep Martin.
Aye.
Rep Maruishi.
Aye.
Rep Todd.
Aye.
Rep Tokioke excused. Rep Matsumoto.
Aye.
Chair, the measure has passed.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have HB 549. We're gonna defer this time certain to this Friday, February 5th, on our 10:00 AM hearing. And we'll give you the amendments then. Okay, next, we're moving on to HB 681. Chair's recommendation is to pass this with an HD1, defect data to July 1st of 2050, and make tech amendments. Any concerns? Oh, okay, and blank out the amounts. Any concerns or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, can you take the vote?
Sure. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Vice Chair votes aye. Are there any no's or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, the measure has passed.
Thank you very much, members. Next, we have HB 767. Chair's recommendation is to pass this with an HD1. All I'm gonna do is defect data, make tech amendments, and that's about it. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. Vice Chair, can you take the vote?
Sure. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments.
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Are there any no's or reservations? Seeing none, the measure has been adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, members. Next up, we have HB 461 relating to coffee labeling. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take out all the reference of phasing out on page 10, lines 3 to 16. Take out all the requirement of listing not grown in Hawaii. And take out, take out, what is that? Read to drink coffee beverage or ready-to-drink coffee beverage. So basically, we're gonna go back to the original law, but we're just gonna change the percentage. And I'm gonna blank out the percentage and defect data. And members, you can vote your conscience on this one. So is there any questions or concerns?
Just quick comments. I just wanted to thank you for keeping this in consideration as, you know, people might have differences of opinion. I'll keep advocating for 100% Kona coffee, but I'm glad that we are moving the bill forward. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none, Vice Chair, can you take the vote?
Sure. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Vice Chair votes aye. Are there any no's or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your measure has been adopted.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is HB 685 relating to raw milk. We will be deferring this. Next up is HB 409. We're gonna defer this bill also. Thank you very much. The hearing is done.